We'll call the meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for being here today. And before we start our meeting today, as Mr. Brant spoke of in his opening prayer this afternoon, our hearts, we come today, our hearts are heavy from the loss of Blake Hughes. He's a senior at South Stokes High School. He was killed in an automobile accident last week in a very tragic event. And celebration of life events were this weekend. And a very nice service for him yesterday at South Stokes. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank our staff, our administrators and staff, and everybody that was involved in what we did, is they tried to help the family and students and everything that we did over the past several days. I was at the service yesterday at South Stokes and it was very sad, the students, a lot of students taking a horror, students and adults. But I know Ms. Cheek had a big hand in it and Dr. Jones, Dr. Rice. And I just want to thank everybody for what they did. And it's amazing, I know we're started a few minutes early here today and we're going to try to adjourn our meeting today at five o'clock so that we can get over to South Stokes. They're having a baseball game. If you're, anybody's watching this live on YouTube, there is a baseball game at South Stokes today and it's going to be in celebration of Blake Hughes as well. We're all planning on hoping to get over there today and attend the game and help out if we can. If you haven't heard, the boosters from West Stokes and North Stokes have agreed to do the concession stands today so that the South Stokes boosters and people can enjoy the game and watch the events unfold on the field. So how this community comes together and supports each other is just, it's just amazing. It's really, it's good to see. So I give a minute. I know we're on a tight schedule today, but does any of the other board members want to, or administrators want to comment on those events? Mr. Brant?
I just want to say that one, our students at our other high schools stepped up, went down, the ball team, the prayer circle, North Stokes, went down to South Stokes and had prayer at the flagpole. Some students from West Stokes stepped up, you know, went over and stuff. Just, I didn't want to omit them. We've got some great kids here in Stokes County. And that's a result of good parents, but also good administrators, good teachers.
Absolutely. Mr. Rogers?
It's a tragic event. I mean, there's no making light, but it warms your heart to see how people can bond together in a special moment like this. And I believe Elkin has stepped up. And my hat's off to them. They have, I believe it's in the form of donations that have been made for the family. Breaks your heart, but it touches at the same time.
I think the donation from Elkin was a very sizable donation, too. So that is, that's very nice. Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, and just like you said, the service yesterday definitely was well done and a tribute and an honor to his life. And as may have mentioned, you look at all the schools and the community coming together and that's what makes Stokes County such an awesome place is we stick together, we come together and like we ought to. So I appreciate it and continue to lift that family up to the Lord.
Absolutely. Dr. Jones?
I just echo the sentiments that have been made so far. It was a tragic event and our community and schools grieved for a long time, you know, but it's, it is comforting to know that neighboring school districts and schools and community members have rallied around, not only the Hughes family, but the ball team and those other friends and other family members that were impacted. So I just, my hat's off to, you've already mentioned Ms. Cheek, but I want to make, tell her directly, thank you, Ms. Cheek, for what you've done. She spent a lot of time and energy ensuring we had proper support in our schools the following day and days after that. And so I do want to thank her and her team for her efforts.
Absolutely. Dr. Rice?
Well, and again, there's almost not enough time to give all the thanks. Dr. Jones and Ms. Cheek were both out eight, nine o'clock that Wednesday night. I had an appointment out of the district that day and they were there stepping up with them, the principals. It's a weird situation. There was a student at the Early College but played sports at South Stokes. And so both, two schools were affected and both schools were there. Again, Ms. Cheek organized the counselors in both locations. I went by there Thursday morning to both locations and students were being served. The teachers in the classroom did some amazing things in tying in curriculum and talking about how to grieve and express your emotions healthfully. And all of those things together were just heartwarming. And then the, again, the inside Stokes County, we know we rally around each other, but West and North reaching out to help with the gates tonight and the concession stand and getting all the food donated so that every penny of the proceeds in the concession stand can go to that family and none of it will have to go for food cost. East Surrey, a rival, heard about that and they offered their support to come in and work those gates and concession stand as well. You mentioned Elkin coming in, School District of Rusley, a thousand students, gave over three thousand dollars to this. And again, the impact that Stokes County has had, and we talk about our bonds running deep. Dr. Cox at Elkin used to work here in this office. Dr. Todd reached out immediately, used to be in this office over in Yadkin County. Dr. Shotwell, who's retired now, but a neighbor, reached back out and said, listen, is there anything that we can do? I mean, the support from this community, and when I say community outside the county walls as well, but the people who have been impacted by this community, it's, as you said, it's very heartwarming to see. And I just thank them and all of those people. I thank those superintendents for what they've done as well, as well as our internal principals as well, for what, the way they've rallied around each other. It's just, it's a horrible situation, but it's been great to see the response in a horrible situation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank everybody for their comments. And again, if you have time tonight, I think the event at South Stokes will be very heartwarming as well. Okay, so we need to approve our agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Do we need to change it to the last one under discussion of the long-term range plan?
We'll still have it. We'll just, we just, Dr. Rice will take care of that.
All right, I'll second it then.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, consent agenda. On our consent agenda today is approval of regular session minutes for April 17th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
All in favor? That brings us to our discussion agenda. Item A on the discussion agenda, discussion of CTE local application. Just like Mr. Rose.
Good afternoon, board members. I've just kind of put some highlights in a document for you. It shows you the information that we use to make the decisions for the local plan. I have shared some of the strengths that we have there and things that we need to continue. I've also shared with you some of the greatest opportunities that we have for growth and the actions that we intend to take moving forward in terms of our CTE planning and how we plan to budget out some items there to keep our success rolling. With that being said, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Okay. Board, any questions for Mr. Rose? Mr. Brant, any questions? I'm good, thank you.
I'd say that it looks like we've got some good improvement.
We do, we do, and we've been able to fund the programs well.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
No, sir. I'm good.
Okay. If we have any other questions come up over the next week or two, we can always contact Mr. Rose, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the way I see here, most everything in the CTE pretty much staying the same?
For the most part, but we're making some gains, which I was real pleased with.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to discussion item B, discussion of FTCC memorandum of understanding. Mr. Rose?
Yes, and...
You looked up, you're still there.
This started with our Stokes Early College and everything about Stokes Early College was described in that memorandum of understanding. Well, that needed to have a full revision because things have changed, funding got cut, and Mr. Durham and I, along with his college liaison, sat down and worked on this last year. And then we shared that over to the representatives from Forsyth Tech. They gave us everything that we asked for in terms of splitting the percentage of that college liaison salary. In addition, we tightened up everything else. We talked about the pathways, we talked about the college advising, and I have to say, they really did us a solid on this and the work that we did. I did share this document with Mr. Johnson for his approval. He was very complimentary of how descriptive it was and how it did cover everything. Basically, we have an excellent partnership with Forsyth Tech. This just defines that partnership a little better. And there was nothing that caused alarm for me within that, and Mr. Johnson did not express any concerns as well. Any questions, board members?
Okay. Board, any questions? Mr. Rogers, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Duncan?
I do, in regards to Forsyth Tech. I know some of the events that happened a few weeks ago onsite at Forsyth Tech with the Gay Pride Day. And we had some issues there on Forsyth Tech basis. I know in the Forsyth County, I wouldn't say Forsyth County schools, they had to update and adjust their memo of understanding. Is that, would that affect Stokes County in any, in regards?
This document does not touch on any of those components, you know, whatsoever. What this basically describes is what, you know, on our campus, what the rules are and how it falls under us. On their campus, which things fall under them. Basically, it just defines our roles in this partnership more based on the location. It does not touch on any of...
I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to put any extra things to where we don't have to worry about drag queens and that kind of thing happening on our campus from a Forsyth Tech perspective. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, but on our campuses...
We're still in control of what happens in there.
Yes, sir.
That's all I want to make sure.
And I guess, following up on what he's asking there, under our policies, those types of things would not happen on our campus. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Brant?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, there again, if we have any other questions come about, I'm sure Mr. Rose will be more than happy to talk with us about that and answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Yes, sir.
Discussion item C is discussion of family life curriculum. We still haven't gotten that up. He's still...
It's my last one, sir, I promise. All right, so after some concerns were brought about the letter, we went through, we have met and talked through every component with our nurses, with our PE teachers. We have carefully reviewed the essential standards and we have gone through the unpacking documents. We've looked at the curriculum that is used to teach these particular standards. And as far as the concerns that were brought forward by the board, those things are not taught in this curriculum. I will make this statement, our curriculum is one that promotes abstinence. That is the one surefire way to prevent STIs in pregnancy. So at this time, again, we've shared the standards, we have shared the curriculum with live links. I'll open up for any questions from our board.
Good. Mr. Duncan, any questions?
No, I appreciate the work to get this together. I know we requested it after concerns from a, from a document that went out that parents had to sign. And then it mentioned that the board had approved. You know, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I think the board would agree, you know. Our big, my big concern was making sure no gender identification, that kind of thing, is being taught from any grade level. And so everything that we read through, that I read through, I didn't see any of that. And I appreciate that, especially when we're starting at fifth grade, you know, with some puberty education and moving up. So again, I appreciate the work that you did. Again, for the newest board member, it's nice to see it all in written format, so I appreciate that.
Well, and some of the organizations may have components within that, but again, I do want to reassure the board, that's not what we are teaching.
Okay.
You know, if there's a, you know, a video or a curriculum material, our teachers will look at that carefully and make sure that it is aligned with the standards and it meets the standards of the unpacking document and the items that you're concerned with, I cannot find anywhere in those documents.
Okay. We teach the things that are required by law for us to teach. Other than that, the materials we use and the conversations we have are very respectful for the values of this community. Again, we're happy, thankful for Ms. Bean to show up this evening, who teaches this. If there were any specific questions, she's here, happy to help answer those as well from somebody that's teaching those, to the point where when I talked to her, she said when some of these topics are brought up, our response is, this is something you need to discuss with your parents, which is exactly the way I believe it should be. And so I appreciate of them doing that as well and valuing the values of our community.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that. You know, it goes back to, it starts at the house and that should be taught at the house from that perspective. We're not indoctrinating kids and I appreciate you standing for that, so that's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Brant?
I'll start preaching.
No, I was just pretty well covered at first. My main concern was, you know, an alternative genders and stuff like that, because I believe there's only two genders. And I think anything else, parents have a right to teach it. Let them teach it at home if they want to, but we shouldn't be teaching it at school.
Good. Mr. Rogers, any questions?
No, I mean, my only statement is, I mean, our job is to educate, not indoctrinate. There are things that as a parent, it is your responsibility and privilege to educate your child in. That's not where we step our toe. And thank you for getting the information and thank you for, I understand, I've got a son that has taught health and some of the questions can get a little challenging and that's probably the understatement when you say challenging, but y'all do a marvelous job ensuring that parental rights are not infringed upon.
Absolutely. We hear a lot of times, I'm sorry, Mr....
No, I'm fine.
I stopped, took a breath, I just jumped right in. I'm sorry about that.
Well, you know me, if I take a breath, I'm done.
We hear, in the public, a lot of times, you know, we hear they don't want to send their kids to public schools because they're teaching all these things. And I try to reassure people, you know, in Stokes County, we're not, you know, we're not like all these, a lot of these other counties. Now, if you go down into some of the bigger cities, into Mecklenburg and Wake and Durham and maybe even Guilford and Forsyth, you're probably going to run into more than you are in Stokes. And so I always try to, try to, you know, try to let the people know that in Stokes, we don't teach those things. So it is good to hear, you know, from Mr. Rose and from Ms. Bean, from the teacher, from the, you know, being in the school point of view, that, you know, that those things don't happen. And I just want to tell the parents out there that if there's any parents that have any questions or concerns about that, please let us know. Call into the office here, Mr. Rose will be able to talk, or Dr. Rice, or Dr. Jones, or I'm sure any of the board members will be glad to talk with you as well. But I want to thank y'all for doing what you're doing and thank you, Mr. Rose, for checking into that and making sure that nothing is, you know, we're not teaching anything or anything is in the material there that we don't want to be, so that's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Bean for taking time out of her night to come...
Yeah.
...in case we had questions and stuff. Thank you.
And just like in class, if you have any questions, go home and ask your parents.
Also, with those first two items, board members with MOU and also with our CTE plan for our meeting on the 14th, that may be on consent or on the action agenda, whatever you wish.
If you send questions and have questions, we're happy to address them at the next meeting, but if we receive none, plan to put those on consent.
Okay. Yeah, I think that'll be fine if we just put it on consent unless we have questions.
All right. Thank you, board members.
Yes, sir, thank you. That brings us to a discussion item D, discussion of Title I pre-approval. Mr. Sands?
Yes, on an annual basis, we are required to receive board consent to be able to submit our federal grant applications. And so that is basically what this is, is just to gather your consent to proceed with receiving our Title I, Title II, Title IV applications and submitting that. So I will entertain any questions, if you have any, on this topic.
Does this need to go on action tonight?
No, this can wait until the next meeting for consent agenda as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Brant?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
The only thing I'll say is if Ms. Moore tells me I believe it is gospel, then if you tell me, I believe it is prophecy, so. It's, you do a fabulous job, Mr. Sands. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duncan?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate you, Mr. Sands.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sands. All right, that brings us to discussion item E, discussion of long-range planning. Dr. Rice?
Board, at the last meeting, we had asked that you consider items that you may want to see in a plan or items that you do not want to see in the plan. From informal conversations before the meeting, I think that you still would like some time to think about that. And while we could sit here and list some if you would like, also, if you would like to submit those via email between now and the next meeting, we could compile a list and share that at a later time. But that'd be your pleasure if you want to continue that way or if you would like to continue with an open discussion at this time. That is the board's pleasure.
Okay. One question is, I know we're waiting on the ORED study. Any update from that?
I know they have been meeting with County Transportation DOT, city planners in King, city planner or county planners with zoning and all that. They are doing their due diligence at this point. Again, I believe we're on pace for that July meeting, but I know that they are actively working at this time. I know there was a meeting earlier today.
Okay. So we just, we still don't know, probably sometime in July, I think...
That's what we're looking at, is a July possible work session for that presentation is what we're shooting for.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Brant, any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for giving me the information I was asking for and everything. Right now, I don't have, I'm not ready to say this or that, you know, that's got to go or definitely got to keep this, because I need this information to get my figures together.
Sure.
I sure appreciate it.
No problem.
Appreciate it, Mr. Ted.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So I think we'll just maybe continue down the path we're on now and, you know, we had, we had our plans there that was submitted, seven or eight different plans we can look at and coming up with ideas and I think, I think that's probably the best thing, just to keep it at. And if we do have any, if we do have some parameters that we want to say that this is off the table, then please email Dr. Rice those and, and we're just going to have to keep working as, you know, towards a solution. I would like to, for us to look at the end of August as a deadline. I know we've, I've had conversations with a couple of the board members and if we have the ORED study come in in July, you know, we can sit here. If we don't, I think if we don't impose a deadline on ourselves, we could just let it drag on and on. And I think it is smart to wait until the ORED study comes in, especially at this point. But I would like to see us put the end of August as a deadline. If we have to, if we're going to apply for a grant, the grant has to, I think, be submitted by the end of September, is that correct? For lottery funds, is that right, the end of September?
So in the manual, it's arranged between August 1st and September 15th. I can tell you, last year it was due August 31st, is what it was due for that particular grant. It may come out this year, it might be September 15th. They give the window in the manual there. I know last year, again, it was August 31st, but somewhere between August 1st and September 15th is what the manual does say.
When will we know that deadline? When will that...
When do they decide?
I think it's in July, when it came out last time, sometime middle of July.
Yeah, we'll let you know as soon as that's posted.
I think we, I think we need to try to reach, try to meet that deadline.
Understand.
I don't think we want to pass that by and then wait a whole another year before we can apply for a grant, because I think the applying for the grant will certainly be part of our plan. And if nothing else, I think we need to come up with a, what we're going to apply for the grant for. If it's combining a couple of elementary schools and we can go ahead and decide on that and then, and then develop the rest of the plan going forward. But I definitely want us to get our grant in, apply for that, and hopefully we can have some luck with that this year. So please let us know, keep us in mind on that, keep us up to date, and let's not miss that deadline.
Yes, sir.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
With the grant application, are you needing to submit a plan when you submit for that grant?
You do not have to submit the full plan for the county.
Okay.
You would have to submit, like if you were going to combine schools A and B, you would just need to say that in the plan, that you're combining schools A and B.
Okay.
You wouldn't need to say, and in 10 years, we're planning on doing something with C and D as well. You just address the plan that's been done, what you're doing.
Do we gain higher priority if we have building plans in hand?
If you have blueprints, construction plans, yes, that you're more shovel-ready than not, but they also understand that people need the grant before they can do those other things as well. Again, we received a grant last year for roofs without engineer drawings of the roofs yet.
Okay.
We, we've also had some discussions, if we apply for a grant for a elementary school and we'll use Popper Springs as an example, it was one of the most recent elementary schools that was constructed, could we go back and pull the plans and use the plans from Popper Springs for a new school? I mean, I think Popper Springs Elementary is a nice facility, where there may be minor changes to it, but could we use that as our basis instead of starting from scratch? Could we, you know, start with that and then if we make, you know, if we use 90% of it, we're only making 10% changes? I'm sure there'd be updates because...
Right. The main thing I can think of that would be difference is, does the plan match the ground? And so that would be the biggest variable, I believe. But if you're basically talking about similar land issues, yeah, I don't think that would be an issue. I think that would probably strengthen it and we could look at that as well.
I guess we have a copy of those plans, you know, Richard, do we?
We could probably acquire plans from other districts for similar schools as a basis.
Sure.
I was just thinking that might speed up our process a little bit, too.
Save us a little bit of money, too, on engineering and architectural costs.
What I don't know and would have to check into if that's the way we're going to go, I don't know if those plans proprietary with a firm that it was to be used. I don't know. I just would have to check with thread and check the legalities of it and see.
Yeah, I'm sure they were probably single-use plans.
Yeah, so we'd have to just check and see, but I'm sure we could use that as a basis, if nothing else, as a, this is the base design, we would like... basis, if nothing else, as a, this is the base design we would like to use for a new facility, plans will be updated.
Yeah. Well, and that, uh, those plans were probably drawn twelve, thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago, uh, so codes have changed and updated since then, so we, there would have to be, that's why I say if we could use ninety percent of it, uh, we may have a ten percent change, but that's better than starting at zero, having to go to a hundred.
Right.
I know on mechanical end, uh, school was built like that, or just a better design for the, as far as the heating and air and everything being up in the ceiling and the attic, whatever, so.
Okay. All right, so that concludes our discussion agenda. Action agenda, uh, action item A is approval of personnel.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Action item B is approval of current expense budget. Do I have a, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. I don't want to do them all, but y'all want to vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And on discussion on, uh, on this item, uh, I think, uh, when we send this up to the commissioners, I would also, uh, we need to make sure that the commissioners understand that this is our, uh, expense budget, uh, and it's not including any of the long-range planning.
Correct, more of that, it would be included in the capital budget.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I don't know if we want to do that with a separate letter or a letter attached to it, I just want to make sure that they understand that this is our current expense budget and, uh, not, uh, not anything as far as, uh, uh, a, a long-range planning budget. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, action item C, approval of capital budget?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion on the capital budget?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Brings us to information and announcements. Dr. Jones?
Mr. Robertson, board members, I want to bring your attention to a couple of dates. Our next regular session board meeting will be held on May the fifteenth at six o'clock PM. If you'll see under the events, we have several that are upcoming this week. Retirement banquet will be held on Thursday at five-thirty at Campaigns. Our May Employee of the Month recognition and our district Teacher of the Year surprise announcements will both take place on Friday, so please mark your calendars, hope you'll be able to join us for that. Also want to call your attention to the Early College graduation will be held on May the thirteenth, that'll be before our next board meeting, so I want to make sure that, uh, you are aware, it's at Wannecote Elementary this year at ten o'clock AM. You'll also see other graduation dates listed in your packet as well as fundraisers, PMR and counters. That's all I had, Mr. Robertson.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. Uh, Dr. Rice, did you have a couple of announcements?
Yes, sir, uh, we're, to be careful, I was planning on doing that at the beginning of the meeting, uh, but, yes, sir, thank you, uh, for that. Uh, as we, this is the time of the year, in the last ti, meeting, we said goodbye to some people, we would like to say hello to some people. First is a, a face that you recognize, uh, our new Director of Maintenance, uh, and Facilities, Mr. Richie Roberts, who's been here, we're glad that he has made it through his first day in his new role. And so, and he's still with us this evening. Uh, Mr. David Brown is taking over as our interim Director of Technology. Uh, Mr. Brown had a long and distinguished career in Surrey County, came very highly recommended, um, a, a, and we are glad to have him. Also joining us is Ms. Janice Frazier, uh, she had a great career in Chatham County. Uh, again, both superintendents spoke very highly of them. When I spoke to Dr. Jordan, the former superintendent in Chatham County, and asked, he said, "How'd you do that?" And so, he was, he was very complimentary, uh, of her and said, "Listen, I, I," and, and both of them said, "I can't give higher recommendations, you're, you're lucky if you get them." And after day one, I feel extremely lucky, but I wanted to introduce them to you this evening. I believe, I should have checked this beforehand, they have cell phones of their previous people, the, the phone numbers, the, the directory has been updated online, so emails are there and all that. If you have any questions, please reach out, uh, but we're glad to have them on board starting today.
Okay. All right, we want to welcome all three of you. Glad to have you, good to see you here tonight. Thank you for joining us. All right, any other, uh, questions or comments from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?